We welcome you all. Now I request C S Ranjit Pandey ji to please give his opening remarks for this session.
Welcome you all to this special session on the dynamic regulatory framework, speed and expectations. Friends, after the pandemic, we have noticed that regulatory and legislative framework is become very, very dynamic and it's changing very fast. Even in the NCLT arena, we have noticed and in fact, we were not thinking before the pandemic that e-codes, e-hearing and e-adjudication will happen. But pandemic has given us say lot of lessons and it has enabled us to speed up and deliver to the stakeholders the way it has to be delivered during the pandemic. Each and every, be it regulatory authority, be it quasi-judicial authority, be it authorities, all become very, very say agile and they started delivering from virtually. Even NCLT and NCLAT started doing the hearing virtually. Government of India has also taken all measures whatever was required to be taken, amend the regulation given the guidance and direction from time to time. And on the basis of that, the judicial transactions or judicial cases whatever was supposed to corporate, corporate adjudications, whatever supposed to happen, that has happened during the pandemic also. Having said so, lot of say nitty gritties and hurdles has been faced. I can say that during the hearing, maintaining the protocol, maintaining the court atmosphere might have been very, very difficult. And it is very, very difficult for the judges also that how they will conduct the proceeding. It is difficult for the advocates and counsel, company secretary, chartered accountant appearing on the behalf of say clients. It becomes difficult for them also that how to appear, how to address and how to maintain the decorum and protocol whatever is required to be maintained in the say physical court. So this is what the theme of this particular session, that how in the dynamic regulatory framework. So for discussing this all dynamic regulatory framework and how to, what are the expectations of the stakeholder, what is the expectation of the say judges sitting in the benches? And what they expect for the professionals, what professionals expect from them and how justice should be delivered as far as litigations are concerned, corporate adjudications are concerned. We have with us three eminent personalities. My lordship, Justice Ashok Ghoshan, Chairman, National Company Law Tribunal, who is attending virtually. I, on the behalf of ICSI, welcome you sir to this national PCS conference. Request all of you to give big round of applause to my lord. Thank you so much for sparing your valuable time, for coming and addressing our members here and we will be enlightened with your word of wisdom. We have two eminent speakers, Sri H C Suri ji, Member Technical, National Bench Kolkata, National Company Law Tribunal Bench Kolkata. He is physically present here, request all of you to give big round of applause for him also. The third speaker, Sri Rohit Kapoor, Member Judicial Kolkata Bench, he is also attending virtually. Request all of you to give big round of applause to him also. So first of all, I'll request Mister Suri to kindly say address the participants, address the delegates and of course theme I have briefly introduced, that dynamic regulatory framework. What is your expectation from the members appearing? So what is the expectation from the members appearing before the tribunals and particularly from the company secretary, that is what we are eager to hear and listen.
My lord, Honorable Mister Justice Ashok Ghoshan ji, Chairman, National Company Law Appellate Tribunal. Mister Pandey ji, past president and Mister Narasimhan, council member, all participants who are present physically or by virtual mode, ladies and gentlemen, good morning to all of you. I am very much thankful to the council members of the Institute of Company Secretaries of India for having invited me to attend the 22nd National Conference of Practicing Company Secretaries and giving me an opportunity to meet all of you and express my views as regards the subject assigned to me. As you know, the Insolvency and Bankruptcy Code consists of total of 250 sections organized into five parts. The main objective of the act is to help the debtors recover from their failed business which are unimaginable with the previous enactments relating to business recovery since the said legislations were highly disintegrated and did not serve the purpose. At the very inception and thereafter, at every stage of implementation of the IBC Code 2016, it would have been hard to anticipate where the code and the insolvency ecosystem would stand in the next five years. Prior to the code, the set of actions available to a banker were time-consuming and getting lost among the various laws that were applicable to resolve a distressed situation. The RBI also accorded several structures for resolving distress through various mechanisms. However, there were only a few cases which could reap the benefit. Maybe to some extent contrary to the expectations, the code since the implementation has been, has seen large number of corporate debtors enter the corporate insolvency resolution process as per the provisions of the code. Notwithstanding the numbers, the media has wavered from prodding its success to criticizing the several problems that have emerged during the implementation of this code. The Insolvency and Bankruptcy Code was drafted by a special committee known as Bankruptcy Law Reforms Committee. The code was passed in both the Houses of Parliament and received the assent of the President on 23rd of May 2016. The main objective of the code is to consolidate the existing framework by creating a single law for the process of insolvency and bankruptcy. It applies to companies, partnerships, individuals, limited liability partnerships and any other body as specified by the Government of India. Prior to the enactment of the Insolvency and Bankruptcy Code, there existed various other laws to handle insolvencies such as the Presidency Town Insolvency Act 1909, the Surface Act 2002, the provincial Insolvency Act 1920 etc., which had its own shortcomings. Now with the enactment of the code, the time taken for the insolvency process has certainly reduced as it unifies all the aforementioned laws and provides a uniform procedure for insolvency. One of the most important features of the code is to ensure an insolvency resolution process which is done in a time-bound manner. It creates new institutional bodies such as the Insolvency and Bankruptcy Board of India, Insolvency Professionals, Adjudicating Authorities, Insolvency Professional Agencies and Information Utilities. The code acts as a regulator of insolvency as it has granted the power to Insolvency and Bankruptcy Board of India to overlook the proceedings of insolvency and also to regulate various organizations that are registered under the board. The authorized insolvency professionals assist in the insolvency resolution proceedings and also exercise control over the assets of the debtor. During the insolvency resolution process, on the other hand, the information utilities registered under 210 of the code engage in gathering, assembling, accumulating, validating and disseminating financial information from companies and creditors to facilitate swift decision-making in the resolution proceedings. The Insolvency and Bankruptcy Board has recognized two tribunals to adjudicate the insolvency resolution proceedings. The National Company Law Tribunal, which is constituted under section 408 of the Companies Act, is the adjudicating authority in case of insolvency of companies of limited liability partnerships while the cases involving individuals and partnerships firms are handled by the debt recovery tribunals. The code proposes two stages in the resolution process. They are: Insolvency Resolution Process where the creditors analyze the debtor's ability and options for its survival and liquidation. If the insolvency resolution process fails or the financial creditors decide to wind up their company and distribute the assets of the debtor. While the journey has been full of ups and downs, the code has largely lived up to the expectations of the stakeholders, so much so that India's ranking in the World Bank Ease of Doing Business Report has been risen from hundreds to place, hundredth place in 2018 to 77th place in 2019, to 63rd position in 2020. A major driver for this has been the improvement in the resolving insolvency parameters. However, as we see, government has already taken steps to restrict timelines by promulgating Act 26 of 2019, which added following phrases to section 12 of I and B code. It says, "Provided further that corporate insolvency resolution process shall mandatorily be completed within a period of 230 days from the insolvency commencement date, including any extension of the period of corporate insolvency resolution process granted under the section and the time taken in legal proceedings in relation to such resolution process of the corporate debtor." Provided also that where the insolvency resolution process of a corporate debtor is pending and has been completed within the period referred to in the second proviso, such resolution process shall be completed within a period of 90 days from the date of commencement of the Insolvency and Bankruptcy Code Amendment Act 2019. The Honorable Supreme Court 2 added extra dimension to the strict adherence to the timelines in the insolvency process. In the case of Ebix, Singapore Private Limited versus Committee of Creditors, the Honorable Supreme Court expressed the following views. IBC is a comprehensive and time-bound framework which was introduced with smooth transitions between reorganization and liquidation with an aim to inter alia maximize the value of assets of all persons and balance the interest of all stakeholders. A legislature, the legislature amended that the takes away, that takes away the basis of a judicial finding is indicative of the strong emphasis of IBC on its timelines and its attempt to thwart the prospect of stakeholders engaging in multiple litigation solely with the intent of causing undue delay. A timely liquidation could be a better proposition than a protracted CIP. The large number of cases meant that all the stakeholders, government regulators, banks, investors and professionals have kept busy. Given the dynamic nature of insolvencies and the magnitude of monies involved, the government and the regulator have been proactive and brought about several changes in the law and corresponding regulations such as giving powers to the Reserve Bank of India to refer to non-banking finance companies into bankruptcy, blocking promoters who had defaulted from bidding and allowing exit from the code post-admission. The government and the regulator have also taken regular market feedbacks while introducing updates or amendments to the insolvency and liquidation process. It must be highlighted here that the code's implementation overlapped with the worst NPA cycle of the independent India's last 75 years without the reciprocating increase in judicial or institutional capacity. Combined with the lack of required out-of-court restructuring options, the code has been converted into a primary restructuring and reorganization mechanism for the corporate distress which may lead to suboptimal outcomes. There is, there is an urgency to build capacity across the gamut to better the yield and enable the code to effectively achieve its goal. While the code and the incumbent stakeholders will continue to evolve, there is a need to protect the insolvency framework to ensure the strength, integrity and effectiveness of the bankruptcy system. There are few points of concern. The IBC ecosystem is being threatened by some fundamental changes that we have noticed that are impacting its efficiency. That's like constant erosion of value of business lined up for insolvency owing to lack of adherence to timelines and lack of liquidity. Next is erosion of value due to lack of quality. IPs who are experienced in managing businesses in stress. And third is limited interest from alternative capital providers owing to lack of clarity on the timelines, contingent liabilities, risk of post-deal investigative actions and lack of quality information. An effective resolution framework designed to tackle burgeoning stress should offer fast-track alternatives to IBC such that IBC is more effectively used as a nuclear option. Decongest the NCLTs and enable the flow of alternative private capital to stress situations. The jurisprudence of any legislation takes time to evolve and IBC was no exception. Interpretation of contentious clauses, contentious clauses for corporate insolvency are now settled. Covid-19 disrupted IBC's stellar run as filing under IBC were suspended with effect from 25th March 2020. One area that required bolstering even before suspension was the National Company Law Tribunal. As on 31st July 2020, total 19,844 cases were pending before NCLT, of which 12,438 pertained to IBC only. Approximately 3,000 cases are undergoing resolution and liquidation implying that 9,000 cases are still pending admission. An opportunity to reduce the backlog, backlog amidst Covid-19 was missed which would have been possible with the better infrastructure, more members and expeditious hearings. The code separates commercial aspects of insolvency and bankruptcy proceedings from judicial aspects. The primary focus of the legislation is to ensure revival and continuation of the corporate debtor by protecting the corporate debtor from the, from its management and from a corporate death by liquidation. The code is thus a beneficial legislation which seeks to revive the distressed company and mere recovery legislation for creditors. The interests of the corporate debtor have therefore been bifurcated and separated from that of the promoters and those who are in management. Thus, the resolution process is not adversarial to the corporate debtor but in fact protective of its interests. The framework, the framework under the code protects the interests of the creditors under the liquidation waterfall by putting the payout to secured creditors higher in ranking against payout towards crown debts. However, during this resolution process, it is the commercial wisdom of the majority of creditors which is to determine through negotiations with prospective resolution applicant as to how and in what manner the corporate resolution process is to take place, including the distribution of funds. There are certain challenges IBC is facing. IBC has strengthened its creditor's position and has transformed the culture of corporate credit in India. It has also brought behavioral changes in promoters of non-performing companies by instilling credit discipline. This coupled with the notification of provisions related to the initiation of insolvency of personal creditors to corporate debtors has further amplified the impact of IBC. Some of the other challenges to the effective resolution of companies under IBC includes issues such as breach of resolution plan by the resolution applicant after approval of NCLT, lack of regulations and rules for cross-border insolvency, lack of regulations and rules for group insolvency, post-closer litigation by operational creditors including tax authorities as unsuccessful bidders and conflicting judgments from different benches of NCLT. Some of the issues faced in the implementation of IBC can be eased by conducting timely colloquium for judges of NCLT and increasing interaction between practitioners from various Sensitizing various government and statutory authorities about the treatment of government and statutory use under IBC to reduce the scope for litigation and consequent delay in the resolution of companies under corporate insolvency. One of the key drivers of economic recovery in India will be the efficient movement of capital from inefficient firms to efficient ones. The economic downturn caused by the coronavirus pandemic has been severe and India's economy was one of the worst affected in 2021, though the economy is recovering faster than initially, as initially estimated. Sustained economic recovery will not take place if stressed businesses cannot restructure their debts properly or if the failing firms cannot be resolved efficiently. India's bankruptcy laws, law is key to solving these regulations, these changes, challenges. In 2006, India enacted this code which was a landmark reform to the nation's financial system and the first comprehensive law to regulate insolvency. India historically suffered from a patchwork framework of insolvency laws that either did not give lenders adequate power to recover their debts upon default or only catered to the interests of certain kinds of lenders to the exclusion of others. The IBC is a modern and comprehensive bankruptcy law that since the enactment has had a significant role in reducing the problem of non-performing assets or bad loans in India, in India's financial system. In the wake of the economic disruption caused by Covid-19, the Indian government suspended the operation of critical parts of the IBC. These changes meant that lenders could not trigger insolvency proceedings against defaulting businesses if the default occurred after March 2020. While this suspension possibly prevented unnecessary, unnecessary business failures and provided a calm period for the economy, these measures have outlived their utility now. India's gross domestic product GDP recorded a contraction of 23.9% in the first quarter of 2021 due to economic shock of Covid-19 induced lockdown. The total contraction in GDP for 2021 is estimated to be 7.7%. While growth is expected to pick up sharply, some underlying weaknesses in the economy have to be addressed to ensure a sustained high-growth trajectory. While other reasons for India's stalling economy continue to exist, including overzealous tax enforcement, reducing NPAs is key to improving credit growth and investment in the Indian economy. This is because...
Sir, my lord, Ashok Ghoshan ji has to start...
Okay, I'm sorry. In five minutes, I'm, in two minutes closing. This is because banks and particularly government-owned banks. As of today, the IBC remains the best mechanism for the resolution of bad debts in India's financial system as debt recovery rates under the IBC have been vastly superior to those under other resolution mechanisms in India. So... So it is very, it is very difficult to mathematically or statistically measure performance of IBC ecosystem. However, an idea can be obtained from the following. A good insolvency system cannot be judged by the number of companies being liquidated because the purpose of insolvency law is to swiftly liquidate firms that have had value erosion and stand a low chance of survival. In a short, short span of time, the IBC has created a discipline in the market formalized and insolvency framework. After this, one step is solution for companies to undergo insolvency resolution and created a new cadre of insolvency and valuation professionals which indeed deserve appreciation of all. IBC is destined to strengthen its foothold in India's corporate segment in long run. To conclude, I must say that the advent of IBC has opened new avenues for all the professionals, be it CEOs, company secretaries, advocates and the other professionals who have in a way formed a composite fraternity of NCLT professionals who are working jointly for the benefit of the economy and development of the country. I thank you all and the organizers who have organized this function and conclude with these words, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. So Sri H C Suri, Member Technical, has delivered his thoughts and given his judgment order in way of his thoughts. Now, we have Justice Ashok Ghoshan ji, Chairman, National Company Law Appellate Tribunal. So thoughts have been discussed, difficulties have been discussed. So thoughts has been discussed, difficulties has been discussed. And way forward has also been narrated by Honorable Mister S Suri. Now over to my lord for say whenever somebody is aggrieved or some parties are aggrieved. With the order of N C L T, then definitely we need to go to N C L A T. And if we are going to N C L A T, different interpretation, my lord has mentioned just now. That there is a conflicting judgment between the different different benches. There is an interpretation issue in the law. All these issues goes to the my lord and my lord gives the interpretation. That yes, law has to be interpreted in the this manner and it should be say. For the purpose of like like in the I B C, for the purpose of maximization of the wealth of the stakeholders. And balancing the conflicting objectives. So this is what the so we always go to the preamble and refer that this is the preamble, this is the objective of law. And interpret the law according to the objective of the legislation. So my lord, uh, all the members and delegate present here want to eagerly listen to you and your thoughts. Uh, my lord, uh, for your address please.
Thank you, Mister Pandey. A very good warning to all of you who are physically present in the venue of functions and those who are virtually connected. Mister H C Suri, Member Technical, Mister Rohit Kapur, Member Judicial, Mister Ranjit Pandey. Office of Company Secratives of India. Information and communication technology has emerged as an effective tool for governance, education, business and office work. It was once difficult to imagine the virtual world gaining so much importance. But it is the new business norm, even the courts prioritize virtual hearing. It is appreciable that courts terminals and appellate terminal have adopted this facility to cater to the needs of the stakeholder. Dear friends, I am happy to note that I C S I, which is pushions and embellished reason. Mison and Motu have been playing a vital role in nation building. The passion, drive and determination of the I C S I with thoroughfulness, skill building. And sanguineous of its veterans and discarding workforce are poised for coming up to the expectation of government and regulation regulators. The economic prosperity and social well-being of our country depends on the use of technology in every field. It is in interest of each one of us to ensure that corporates run on sound management principles. That markets are competitive and externalities such as social and environmental impact. Of businesses are all well accounted for. It is essential to provide an orderly environment and framework that would inspire confidence. And trust on the part of the domestic and international investors and allow talent to be nurtured. Company secretaries as a community is an effective enabler to implement the new technologies in the secretarial area. But as the time changes, as the economic scenario changes, as our society changes. As the need and expectation changes and as an Indian economy aligns itself to the global economy. We need to rely on ourselves with the desired deed. Dear friends, I am happy to note that I C S I has contributed in the endeavors of the government and formed its. I C S I Insolvency Professional Agency and I C S I Registered Values Organization. Inter alia to enroll, educate, train and also monitor the performance of its registered members. As insolvency professionals and registered values. I have also told that I C S I has constituted task force on N C L T. Which had made recommendation to the N C L T with respect to harmonizing the diverse practices. Being followed at N C L T benches with a view to ease the practical difficulties being faced by its members. In complying with the provisions of the Companies Act and allied laws while appearing before the N C L. Various courses being conducted by I C S I in areas such as corporate governance, arbitration. I B C corporate restructuring is also important step for capacity building of its members. I am happy to share that company secretary professionals are doing good work both at N C L T and N C L A T. And assisting the terminals in discharging their duties. Their possesses good understanding of the Companies Companies Act two thousand thirty, securities laws, industrial laws. And customary laws, principles of natural justice inter alia, not only from legal. But also a management and technical perspective. The company secretaries have been spearheading several complex corporate litigation matters. Before N C L T and N C L A T as authorized representatives. The proximity and adherence of the company secretaries by working with stock management of large organizations. Has also incalculated in them sense of business understanding apart from the legal knowledge. You all will agree that with change in economic scenario, expectations particularly from professionals have increased. As company secretaries, you must continue to retain the culture of responsibility and public trust in profession. Acting in the interest of national economy. It is both privilege and prerogative to profess with ethics and integrity. One of the major expectations of the society from the professionals, including the company secretaries is ethical compliance. Which is perhaps the most significant assurance in order to maintain the position of trustworthiness. Dear friends, with increasing business complexity, it is important that professionals must equip themselves with the changes occurring. And stand out to the expectation of society. In matters of innovation and knowledge empowerment, you must keep with the flow of current. But in matters of values and principles, you should stand like rock as ultimately. It is the image and the reputation of the profession that would enable you to sustain, grow and excel. It is important to state that no profession can aspire to progress unless it has a vision. And set service to the community as its objective. Your resilience and practice to respond to the changing situation and growing demand will determine your continued existence and growth. Dear friends, as the nation embark on a high-growth rate and emerges as an economic power. The company secretaries would prepare themselves to play a proactive and dynamic role in growth of the nation. I would persuade I C S I and its members to come up with innovative ideas and use automation. And emerging technologies such as artificial intelligence, blockchain, internet, internet of things, big data and analytics etcetera. To further speed up existing processes and reach every nook and corner of the country to further its objective. In view of the vast opportunities emerging with establishment of N C L T. The company secretaries should constantly upskill and enhance their competencies with the best benchmarks. To provide value-added service in assisting the tribunals. In dispensation of justice and speedier disposal of matters like merger and amalgamation, restructuring, insolvency resolution. Binding of companies etcetera. In the end, I once again congratulate the I C S C I for holding this event. And urge company secretaries to continue with their good work in the existing and upcoming areas. Thank you, Jayant.
Thank you, my lord, for such an enlightening address to all the members. Uh, may I request for some questions or uh my lord would like to uh leave.
You can you can put the question after end of the session and I I seek your permission to leave to attend my other business.
Okay, uh, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to all of you.
Okay, so I request the organizers now to display Shahid Ki Beti certificates for my lord. Uh, it's a token of appreciation from I C S I. We contribute to the Martyrs' Daughter Fund of Indian Army. Uh, on the behalf of every speaker come here. So this is for my lord, Justice Ashok Bhushanji. A big round of applause for his valuable time and word of wisdom. Thank you, my lord.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
A good a good day.
Thank you.
A good day.
Now moving to our next speaker, Sri Rohit Kapoorji, Member Technical, Kolkata Bench. Is he online?
I am online now.
Yes, sir. So, uh. Now on the taking it forward, the same theme dynamic regulatory framework, speed, services and expectation. Uh, request you to kindly deliver your address. And thereafter, if some time permits, then we will ask some questions from the audience and after your address.
First of all, thank you for uh, thank you so much for having me here. Uh, I come, I till September, I was a practicing lawyer. So, uh, after I joined this side. You know, my little experience, I'm at a very, you know, recent stage of learning this thing, but. There are certain things which come up in my mind. Yes, your topic says regulatory and legislative framework. We all knows, we all know that the timelines are the essence of the I B C code. Because the maximization of the asset value is the objective. But day to day we see that for meeting these timelines at times, we members, we also. Uh, sit together and discuss how to, uh, you know, there are two sides because. After all, the law says that you have to hear the other side before passing any order. Day to day, we see number of applications which are being filed. Uh, by the resolution professionals on behalf of the committee of creditors etcetera. And we find my experience is subject to what Mr. Suri, because he is very seasoned and very experienced persons. These uh, in at times we see that these are the basically the obligations of these institutions. The R P is a, I need not say how important he is for the in the regulatory process, how important institution he is. But we see at times they come to us just for seeking advice, what what falls in their domain, what is their obligation. Merely they come to us and once anybody, R P is or is on behalf of C O C, the liquidators. Then the notice has to go, then the other side has to file a reply, then they have to be heard. And in the process, you know, the name, uh, the main business which is the uh, the corporate petitions are particularly the seven, nine, ten. They take a backseat. So in a in very short, I am trying to say, Mr. Suri has discovered, he has led along a lot of emphasis on the timelines for following timelines. As a lawyer, I also feel because I have represented the banks, I have followed the recovery suits. But our mindset has to change. Because this is a summary jurisdiction. It is not a civil court where one would really would like to have a full-fledged trial. And incidentally, the evidence, the evidentiary value attached to the information utility is is a significant feature. We may require some other other things like this because otherwise proving how to prove. Uh, the these things used to take a lot of time in the civil courts. But now the evident, the law itself says, once the information utility information is there, that is, that is virtually a unverified evidence. So all that inside suffice is to say, we all the all the professionals have to understand. That first of all, this is a summary jurisdiction. And the objective is that we have to follow the timelines to meet the objectives. So we have to find out the ways how to briefly address the court and put across your point. And for that, if 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 the if the learned company secretaries have suggestions, those are welcome. For that matter of fact, the lawyers, the practicing lawyers in the N C L T or also the stakeholders. I don't know whether they are present or not here. We would like to have their point of view also. That how to curtail the the lengthy arguments with now we have evolved a system. Of having written convenience notes that has helped up to a large extent. But at the same time, giving time to the lengthy arguments and having the convenience notes. We are virtually entering into the world of e uh, e-codes, green quotes. Cut in these times, we we can really, of course, subject to what the stakeholders say, what the lawyer can say. Because they are important, they are part and parcel of in the system of dispensation of justice. Why not to curtail or allocate allocation may not be possible. But these are the areas, meet the timelines and various objectives of the act. Number one. I will conclude by saying that we have to come up with ideas. How to contain contain or curtail the lengthy arguments. Number two is the institution of C O C. And the resolution professionals, it is required to be strengthened. Because the resolution, internal resolution professional, resolution professionals, they should not be coming to N C L T for everything. Which are their obligations, they because finally they file seeking advice, it consumes lot of time. Reply is invited, the arguments are to be heard. Then the lender banks also, they they have also to be uh, their mindset. Uh, they should also appreciate that we have to meet the timelines. Because we find major banks are the creditors. They have also to look in this area that how to in in the regulatory and the legislative framework, which is the topic. How to assist the tribunal so that these timelines can be followed. And the objectives and the results sought to be achieved by this regulatory and legislative firm. Uh, this legislative framework can be really achieved. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. Uh, in a very brief and crisp address. Uh, you have touched upon various issues and in fact given the guidance also to the professionals. Uh, from the speech, I can gather three important things. Number one, that how to achieve the objective of any legislation. Number two, how to adhere the timeline because insolvency or for for a matter, any say business, corporate business. If it is stuck or for a matter even justice delivery, if it is stuck by way of time or say taking too much of time. It is justice delayed, it is justice denied. So adhering the timeline and third one, that professionals should do the routine job themselves. And not approach the tribunals for the mere routine matters or procedural matters. Of course, we as a professional, we as an insolvency professional, we have the responsibility and obligation. To do our duties as per the say what has been prescribed in the law. But my lord, I have a small question here and totally agree with your thoughts. That yes, we professionals need to say not burden the courts with the so many applications. We should go ahead with what is required to be done as our duty as a professional. We should go ahead with what is required to be done as our duty as a professional and some value or some judgment we should also apply at our level. Having said so, sometimes this insolvency professional particularly is always a punching bag and there are two regulators. First regulator is Institute of Insolvency Professionals that is registering and regulating. Second regulator is Insolvency and Bankruptcy Board of India. Then third Committee of Creditors, they are also punching him like that, anything that you are not doing your duty according to what it is required to be done. And thereafter, NCLT, there also he is getting scolded so many time that you have not done your duty properly. So over cautiousness of the insolvency professional is leading to the so many applications. This is what my thought process is. Now, what is the solution? What is the solution? I, I think I'll be looking forward for the solution to this discussion. Uh, to my mind, uh, I think I'll be seeking guidance of the, my lord also, that what is to be done. Institute side I can say that yes, institute can do more and more training program, insolvency, uh, Indian Institute of Insolvency Professional can do more and more capacity building program, training programs and even for time being, move courses for the young professionals also, that they should appear in this manner, they should address and handle the meetings in this manner, Committee of Creditors meeting I'm talking about and all other things. So the institute side we can do this. But at the same time, I think some education from the, say, Committee of Creditors should also be done and it is mostly bankers. And if say IBA, IBA or maybe RBI or any other institution can take a leap forward or lead forward to train them also that how to say, respect the law, whatever is prescribed in the insolvency law that they also come, are required to come on time, conduct the meeting and give the direction to the insolvency professional, what is, like, like it has been mentioned that there are so many fund requirement which is pending. Uh, there is no, lack of fund is always a constraint, that is also a point. So my lord, uh, point here is that it, of course, uh, insolvency professional is a punching bag, everywhere he has to get, uh, say, direction, direction and direction and implement this. Law is saying something, Committee of Creditor is saying something and then he has to approach to the court. So how to balance this? How to say assist the courts that we should not be going with the so many applications? Can we develop some SOPs? Can, what can be done? So some guidance should be given to the institute and insolvency professionals also from your side. So question to you, uh, sir. Yes, Rohit ji, uh, I'm addressing. So what kind of guidance can be given? Can we develop some, some mechanism or maybe some regulation? Uh, you're audible sir, you're audible.
Yeah, because there is some machine now working going one building, that may interrupt. See, look.
You're audible.
See, you were right, uh, Sir Pandey, you were right. Over cautious approach, my experience has been, it comes when you are in doubt, when your mind is not clear. Once your mind is clear, you are confident, then your approach becomes bold. So, understanding what the position of law is, understanding what your obligations are, can really make the things different. Because the decision has to be taken, sometime many decision has, has to be taken, big finance, lot of finances involved, I can understand they play very cautious. So that they are also, they may be right in this position, they should take all these steps so that there, there is, there is no suspicion. But you, once your mind is clear, once your mind is clear that the law is like this, so imparting training, because as I said earlier, we are at a, I, I feel you are more experienced, brother Suri is more experienced, but I still feel that we are at a nestled stage. And understanding position of law, holding more and more interactions with the lawyers, with, with, with the honourable members, very interactive sessions can clear doubts. This is very essential, how to clear those doubts which they may be having, which the lenders may be having as a part of the COC, which you are having as a professional. You file application, they file applications, they have to sit, sit, sit across and clear the mind, clear the doubt. What, what, why they, why they, you say punching bag, you see institution of RP is as such, I would say, that is the, you would say the central point. They have to. Their, their role, their role as I understand, I told you, I have little experience, brother Suri and you are having much experience, his role is as such in the total regulatory and legislative framework that he has to be very decisive. So how to make, you know, ultimately it's your knowledge which makes you confident. It is your clarity of, uh, the idea clarity of law, clarity of the propositions of law, which you makes you to decide the things in a quicker manner. If you are in doubt, then there are problems, that delays the things.
Uh, you want to add something?
Hello, hmm, okay. I will add to what my brother has stated just now. The main thing is that whoever appears in courts, whether the, it's company secretary, chartered accountants or advocates, they should study the law IPC very thoroughly, all the sections, rules and regulations, particularly the RPs who are, who have been assigned very important role in the code. They should be properly trained and they should strictly follow the timeline. We see on, while practically when, when we are hearing the matter, various times we have noticed that the, whatever duties are assigned to the RPs, they do not do it and they make such a frivolous application for seeking guidance or what should we do and these questions, whereas it is already provided in the regulations and the sections. If they go through the duties assigned to the RPs, it is very much within their arena of duties and their rights also, they, similarly liquidators also, they have a lot of power and there is no need to seek guidance from the, this bench. And particularly when the professionals appear before us, they have, sometimes they treat the NCLT as a civil court. They have been given time to file reply or rejoin under two weeks, four weeks, whatever time is given, although we are not supposed to give a lot, longer time, one week or two weeks, but sometimes we give them four weeks also in a particular case. After four weeks they will come, sir, we could not file. Then we have no option but to impose cost also, although we are paying to impose cost, but we have to, to discipline them. If we, uh, become so liberal, then it will be just like a civil court. So we, at least our bench, we never see who is junior, senior, what profession he belongs to, whether he is a chartered accountant, company secretary or advocate, we treat them equally in every respect, whoever appears before us and we want to comfort them, we do, always help them if possible in whatever manner. Our main thrust is to decide the case.
So, uh, I think from this question and discussion, three important thing, things are coming out. One is knowledge of the law. Second, training yourself in such a manner that you should be able to execute, interpret and implement the law. And third, important thing, Mr. Kapoor has said that decisiveness and this is very, very essential and important for any professional, even for the judges, even for the, say, uh, council appearing before the tribunals, all have to take the decision and in fact, uh, insolvency professional in particular, they have to take the decision. Unless and until they take the decision, if they will remain in confusion, I think justice or maybe, uh, say, delivery or timeline cannot be maintained and we will not be able to complete the process. One, uh, important fact has been added by Suri sahab also, that yes, uh, knowledge is essential. And if you will be able to build your capacity particularly in IBC, Suri sahab has mentioned that in IBC, I think you need to read the law as well as judgments because that also becomes very, very relevant, that it is supplementing the law in, say, wherever it is possible that courts are interpreting the law and giving the, filling the gaps and giving the interpretation on a particular situation. Uh, I think before wrapping up, I just want to raise two, uh, say, important issue. One is uniformity in the judgment between the various benches. This is one of the issue which is very, very critical for the professionals, that, uh, say Mumbai bench is saying something, uh, Chennai bench is saying something and Kolkata bench is saying something, what I need to follow. So this one question and second question is, uh, that pronouncements of the orders are getting so much delayed. So what should be the solution? Whether we should approach the court and move the applications also for the pronouncements or we should just wait for the order to come? So these two small issues, uh, may be big but questions are very, very small.
You see, at, at present, I don't think this question still survives because we do not have any pending matters for announcement for more than fifteen days. These are, the situation had occurred, unusual situation had occurred when my brother judicial member, uh, had left Kolkata because his mother was unwell for so many months. So that all the matters which had been reserved for orders could not be dictated, either dictated or approved by him, although all these matters were dictated by us, but he could not approve it from the, his native place. When, as soon as he came, we cleared all the matters. But I think at present position is that fifteen days' pendency is there. We are clearing all the matters within one month now. So, as regards conflicting judgments, you see every judge has his own viewpoint, they can interpret the law in their own way. But once a judgment of a coordinate bench is there, we should either follow it or if we have a dissenting viewpoint, we should refer it to the larger bench. We can make a request to the president, NCLT New Delhi to, uh, form a larger bench on that particular issue, that we have been doing.
So thank you so much, Suri sahab and Kapoor sahab for enlightening addresses and I appreciate truly that complete professional guidance, both of you has given to our members and I expect that our members while appearing or while, uh, say discharging their duties as a resolution professionals will follow the word of wisdom given by the learned speakers, learned panelists. I'm sure that we will be becoming one of the most important constituent while discharging the duties as a insolvency professional and also discharging the various functions as a appearing professional or counsel in the tribunals. So, uh, we are concluding this session, I request the organizers to kindly display Shahid Ki Beti certificate for Mr. Rohit Kapoor. A big round of applause for Mr. Rohit Kapoor.
Thank you so much, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, sir, for your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, now I request Mr. Sandeep Kejriwal to kindly come forward and present Shahid Ki Beti certificate to Suri sir. So we are closing this session. Thank you so much for your patient listening and, uh, hope that you will continue your work as an insolvency professional and as a counsel before the NCLT as we are doing. And we are, we have till now performed excellent services to the, uh, say, this, these two legislations and particularly, uh, services to the NCLT. Thank you so much.
Hey, hello. You see, I am HOD of Kolkata Bench and since the day of my taking over as HOD of Kolkata Bench, I have tried to make so many improvements, reforms in the, you must have noticed in the list also, if there is any complaint to any officer, any person from any officer, they can always come to me. On the top of the list, I have always published that if there is any irregularity or illegality committed by any officer, my staff members, any person is most welcome, they can straight away come to my room.
Thank you so much, thank you. Uh, uh, we are concluding this session, thank you so much for, to all the audience, thank you.
We, we request all the delegates to proceed for the tea and thereafter we join at around ten.